Call the meeting to order. Welcome to the monthly board meeting of the Wycomico County Board of Education. We always begin by being led in the Pledge of the Flag by one of our fine young students.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So it's my pleasure to introduce everyone, I have to turn the mic up a little bit, okay, to Shayla Waters, who is a kindergarten student at West Salisbury Elementary School, and you did an outstanding job. Did you enjoy it?
Yes.
Yes? Okay. Well, thank you for being here. Would you like to introduce your guests who are with you tonight?
Papa, mommy, and daddy, and Ms. Wright.
And me, Mom.
Well, you did a great job, and I have something for you so you'll remember this night forever and ever, right? A flag and some pencils and a certificate. So we're gonna get our picture taken, okay? Okay. Great job.
Outstanding.
Thank you.
Thank you. Be seated. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Sefowski just asked a question that I don't think I've ever told the board. Following this, the student who comes and says the pledge does get copies of the pictures with a little note from me, so you have that to look forward to. You'll have your own pictures. Thank you.
Thank you very much. 3.2, approval of the agenda. If I have entertained a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Motion is second to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay, 3.3, moment of silence. We have, over the last, since the last board meeting, we've unfortunately had three former employees pass. Judith Maria Andrews, whose last assignment was a school nurse at Salisbury Middle or Wycomico Middle, then at Choices Academy. Anne Livingston Parsons. For thirty years, Anne worked as a Wycomico County school bus driver. And finally, Frances Potts Wainwright. Retired in 1978 after teaching thirty years at Pittsfield Elementary. So if you could take a few minutes in your own way to honor their memory. Thank you. 3.4, one of the highlights of our meeting, student representatives to the board. We'll begin with the young man seated at the table, Parkside High School's Gavin Dennis.
Thank you. I'd like to start off by saying that we here at Parkside are all back in our building, and we are loving the upgrades. Thank you to all the board members, Dr. Hanlon, the Facilities Department, and the IT/MIS Department for making Parkside a great facility in which to learn. Our MCAT scores are to be celebrated. We increased our English Ten Assessment scores by over eleven percent, which is the greatest growth in the county. Our special education students increased their Algebra I scores by four point eight percent. We're not yet where we want to be, but are definitely moving in the right direction. We had a great opening and celebrated our new upgrades in the auditorium and gym. Our planetarium is now reopened, upgraded, and scheduling presentations for elementary schools and the community. We just held our homecoming in which six hundred and sixty-one students attended and enjoyed the night. Our fall athletic teams had a great season in which our field hockey and boys soccer made it to the final four. Our football team plays this Friday in Elton, Maryland, and is on the road to becoming state champions. Our marching band had a great season, finishing sixth out of seventeen bands. We are very proud of all athletes, scholars, and musicians. Our CTE program will be once again highlighted on our local news station in February as we continue to grow these excellent college and career programs. We are grateful for all the support from our central office and community. And if we were to request anything at this point, it would be increased access to technology as it would better our ability to learn and for teachers to teach in this technology-driven world. Thank you.
Thank you, Gavin. James and Bennett High School, Lauren Ila filling in for Young Zhu Li. Welcome.
Good evening Superintendent Dr. Hanlon, Vice Chairman Mr. Malone, and board members. My name is Lauren Ila, the Executive Treasurer of the J&amp;B SGA. Young Zhu Li, the Executive President, was unable to attend tonight's meeting as she's taking a class right now. But our seniors have begun to plan for life beyond high school, and whether that might be a post-secondary education, entering the workforce, or entering the military, our counselors have been working to provide seniors with many opportunities. We recently held onsite admissions for Salisbury University, a week-long workshop to aid students with college applications, and seniors have taken advantage of a new Team App platform that we've created to get information about scholarships. I am also happy to report that our SJ-led activities this month have been very successful. Our homecoming dance was enjoyed by over seven hundred of our students, and the pep rally the preceding Friday saw participation from all grade levels. Our fall athletes also had great seasons with several playoff, regionals, states, and championship appearances and wins. Our winter athletes are now beginning their seasons, and the SJ is planning to hold a winter pep rally to celebrate them. We recently held our fall blood drive with the Blood Bank of Del Marva, and we are planning to hold a fundraiser for the Leukemia Foundation. Currently, the SJ is organizing a community involvement event to take place this spring to make a more positive impact on our student body and the community with the help of J&amp;B's staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Mordella High School, Tiana Staten. Don't see her here. I'm sure she's studying right now. Wycomico High School, Reese Chang. Welcome.
Hello, hello.
Hello.
It's been a big month for WyHigh, and I'm excited to discuss some of our highlights. So, the end of October marks the end of fall sports, and we have something to brag about this year as our unified tennis team placed third in the state final. While our other sports may not have stopped the presses with big wins or deep playoff runs, our football team still had a season to remember with newly appointed Coach Taylor at the helm. We are incredibly proud of all of our fall athletes and are excited to welcome the winter sports season. The National Honor Society has been busy with old events and new ones as they made their first trek over to East Salisbury Elementary School to work with the fourth graders on November first. The NHS plans to travel to the elementary school every second and fourth Friday to work with the fourth and fifth graders to help them develop social and study skills. They also passed up trick-or-treating to volunteer at the Holly Center's Halloween Dance. NHS members had the opportunity to dance and get to know many Holly Center residents who proved to be as much fun as they always are. As a result of the Start With Hello Kindness Initiative headed by the Guidance Department, WyHigh has become the first high school in the county to be recognized as a kindness school. This is a huge step in the right direction, and more activities promoting kindness can be expected throughout the school year. Our Guidance Department also held an MCAT Week in preparation for the dreaded November first deadline. This week was designed to provide aid to students throughout the college application process. Students were provided with FAFSA workshops, help on their essays, and even had the opportunity to play college-themed bingo to win real prizes. Cadets in the JRTC program have always demonstrated a great commitment to serving the community around them. These commitments were recognized on November first as the Daughters of the American Revolution, Revolution, excuse me, presented the program with an American flag that once flew over the Capitol Building. The JRTC is more than pleased to receive such an honor and plans to continue to serve the community and motivate young people to become better citizens. Just earlier this week, our own WyHigh SGA was fortunate enough to host the inaugural Student Leadership Advisory, or Council, meeting, or SLAC. Students had a blast listening to Maurice Waters Jr., the guest speaker for the event, and getting to speak to real board members. Being present at SLAC was like no other. It was incredible to see youth feel heard as they passionately discussed real issues with people who had the power to change it. Seniors and faculty are asked to get in on the giving spirit this November as the Blood Bank of Del Marva pays us a visit on November twenty-sixth. Anyone over the age of seventeen is welcome to get in the giving spirit and donate blood to the cause. And I actually have something for you guys, so we, some kids at WyHigh wrote thank you notes for you guys coming to the SLAC meeting. So, Dr. Hanlon, this is for you, Dr. Briggs. Mr. Brady. Mr. Soffler. Mr. Brown. And Mr. Miles. Yeah, so thank you, guys. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much. 3.5, public comments. I don't have, I don't see, okay. I don't have any public comments. 3.6, the superintendent's report. Dr. Hanlon.
I have just a few items, but I want to start by saying Shayla, you're paying very close attention. I'm very impressed, and I saw you watching those high school students very intently. Is that gonna be you someday?
Yes.
Good job. Okay, so, first thing I want to do is, I wasn't planning to do, but I had a text from Mr. Fitzgerald. So I will just read it to you quickly. I've just asked him if he's watching, but he hasn't answered me yet. As everyone may know, Mr. Fitzgerald is out having, recovering from surgery, and he said, "Please let everyone know that I'm on a slow road. Thanks for all the prayers. Hope to be home by the end of the week. Have a great board meeting." Don. So, it's great. Great to hear from you. If you are watching, great to hear from you. So, and speedy recovery. So, the next item I'm also very excited about, very pleased that we have a guest with us tonight. We are implementing a new program in our high schools, one that we've been talking about for the better part of a year, and it's called Equal Opportunity Schools. And so, we're very, very pleased to have with us tonight Dr. Terri Hackett from that organization. And I'm gonna kick it off to Mr. Brady, Director of Secondary Education, to maybe do an introduction and tell us a little bit about the program.
Thank you so much. So, we are excited to be here. We spent the whole day together, and hopefully she didn't get sick of me, but Dr. Hackett and I, and Dr. Mitchell, who was next to her, we were at three of our schools in town, Wycomico High School, James and Bennett, and Parkside High School, working with Equal Opportunity Schools, who we have partnered with for the next two school years. And so, we're very excited about the work that we're doing, and we started really diving into numbers and data today and working with some school teams that we've pulled together. So, it's a big initiative, but I'll let Dr. Hackett take over and share some of the things that we're working on.
Thank you so much Superintendent Hanlon, Vice Chairman Malone, to the rest of the board, good evening, everyone here, good evening. I'd like to first say thank you so much for inviting me. We're very, very excited. Equal Opportunity Schools is very excited to have the opportunity to talk to the board a little bit about what we're doing. So, I will, let's see, we promised if this went haywire, I would just talk.
There we go.
Yay. Equal Opportunity Schools is on a mission. We're on a mission to ensure that all students have the opportunity to succeed in the challenging high school courses, particularly that low-income students and students of colors have the opportunity to succeed at the highest levels. So, that's what it says on the screen, and we are on that mission. And what that really basically means is that there are students in your high schools who are students of color and low-income students who probably would do really well in an AP course, and they've never really thought about it. No one's ever said anything to them about it, and it's now time to change that. So, that's what we're here for, and that's what we want to do and work with your schools to do. We do that in several different ways. We garnered your demographic information, some of your test score information that you wanted to share with us, and then the students took a survey over the past couple of months. And that's how we determine an outreach list of the students that we would like to see in an AP course and that we will be talking to for the rest of the year. The students will go into the AP courses in the fall of nineteen. And this is why. We already know this information, that there is a gap for Black and Latino students in college completion. So, if we look at these statistics, twenty-five to twenty-nine-year-olds in the United States that have attained a bachelor's degree or higher, we see the numbers here, forty-four percent for white and Asian, for white, and seventy-one percent for Asian-American, twenty-three and twenty-one respectively for Black, African-American, and Hispanic. So, we know that white students and Asian students have the most access and the least amount of barriers, and that Black students and Hispanic students are the exact opposite. Taking an AP course will help open that door for some of them, as they all wish to, students plan and want and dream to go to college, taking an AP course would help them along the way. So, this is a national and a local challenge, to be quite honest, because every year across this country, there are nearly a million of underserved students who are prepared to succeed in their schools in the most rigorous courses, but they're excluded. And so, what we've done, since the students have already taken the survey, one of the questions is, what would you like your school to know about you? So, we've picked one from each school, and I'll read them very quickly. From Bennett High School, an African-American student shared that she wants, he or she wants you to know that, "I want to learn and do the best I can in classes. I also wish they knew how much the grades that I receive affect my future. I want them to push me to my limit to get me where I need to be academically." At WyHigh, a student shared, "I'm very interested in a lot of things, and all they have to do is talk to me, but they don't. So, I really don't know about programs that I should have taken that would be great for me." And from Parkside, "I take my education seriously." So, they should take their job seriously. "I'm tired of teachers who don't care and are lazy because they're playing with my education. The education system failed us. That is what you need to know about me and how I feel." Now, these are all very, three very strong statements, and they all don't sound like this. Other statements talk about how excited they are about the classes that they take and the teachers that they have and the work that they're doing, but we kind of wanted to show you, this is what some students are feeling. One of the things about all of this is this. Students have the right to take an AP course, we know that, but no one ever talks to them about it. And so, maybe if we start talking to students, they'll have a different mindset and thought about taking an AP course. So, this is the year at a glance. In the fall, we did the study. Again, that's where you share the demographic information, you got your test score information, and then the students took the survey. In the winter, which is kind of where we are right now, the survey is complete, and I shared the findings with the schools today, earlier today, three times in a row. All day. And I was repeating myself to the same, saying the same thing to the same school because I thought I said it to the, it was interesting. So, we strategized and think about, now we have a list of students that we like to talk to, how are we going to do that? What's the most effective way to reach out to the students, to share with them our thoughts about what we think about their abilities? And when they say no, what are we gonna do? So, at Equal Opportunity Schools, we share that the first no can't be their only no. Because if we go up to a student and say, "Dr. Mitchell, I think you should take an AP course," she's gonna say... She's going to say no. So, we hope and trust that schools, as they do their outreach, will touch students three times. Because either by the third time, you've worn them down, and they just want you to stop asking them, and they agree to it, or they really will have changed their mind and are interested, or they really will say no. But we definitely can't take their first no as their only no. And then the crux of all of this is, you can't just put a student who's never taken an AP course into an AP course and say, "All right, we're gonna see you at the end of the school year." There needs to be some support for them. So, in the spring, we'll work on creating and supports for students so that they can be successful. And what I say is, you want to support them till they get their sea legs. It isn't a foregone conclusion that every student of color or low-income student who takes an AP course for the first time is going to need support. You will put some students in classes, and they will just simply fly. But there will be some who are a little unsteady at the beginning, and we want to hold them up and celebrate them and work with them so that they can be successful in their AP courses. So, this is for fall twenty nineteen to twenty twenty. This is just eleventh and twelfth grade students of color and low-income students in the three schools. And what this tells is that there are two hundred and thirty-six students of color and low-income students currently participating in AP. And their total, five hundred and sixty-seven students total. Again, this is just eleventh and twelfth grades. This isn't everyone. And so, what this shows you is that about, at a little, about eighty-two, eighty-six percent, Asian students are participating, eighty-six percent, and then the numbers go down exponentially from there. Eighty-six percent middle and high income, and then sixty. And you'll see the difference between the white and Asian students and the students of color that are in the middle. So, at the end of the day, we have what are called opportunity charts, and the opportunity chart says, these are how many students your particular school needs to put into the AP program in order for it to be diverse. And sometimes those numbers can be high. And I shared with the schools this morning that I'm not really concerned about the number. What I'd like to have happen is you make your AP programs more diverse than they are today. And it doesn't necessarily have to be three hundred and fifty-seven students. It could be seventy-five students. As long as it's more than two, I'm okay. And I'm okay. So, that's what we'll work on, and we'll talk with each school individually to determine what their number is. And then next year, we'll build upon that and continue to build upon that until the programs are diverse. These are students across race and income levels who have high college aspirations. So, again, the gray at the very, very top are students who want to obtain two-year degrees, associate degrees. The lighter blue is a demonstration of four-year degrees, and the dark blue is advanced degrees. So, this is across race and income levels for the entire district. So, again, it's just a visual to give you an idea of where students are and what their thoughts are. And finally, at the end, what will happen is, after it's all said and done, the surveys are complete, this is called a student insight card. There's a student insight card on every student at every school that we're working with, but the outreach list is comprised of students of color and low-income students, and that's our first focus. And then we move down from there. You see, it has the student's picture, their name, their school. Their learning mindsets are on the left. This particular student is community leadership-focused growth mindset. The other readiness indicators, she would consider taking upper-level courses, and she's not feeling challenged right, not feeling challenged right now. At the bottom are the test scores that you provide for us, and if there's a star in place, what that means is, the student is AP comparable with the students that are in their school, not across our portfolio, not across the country, but in their school. Their scores are comparable to the scores of the students who are currently taking AP courses. On the right-hand side, you'll see the educational goal, their career interest, and trusted adults. So, trusted adults is a very important piece. Who is the person that you go to? If we stop for just a few minutes and think about, who is your trusted adult? Who is the person that you went to in your high school? Who is the person that told you that you can make a difference? Who is the person that told you, "You know you can do so much more than you're doing, and I'm gonna help you do it"? That's your trusted adult. And so, most students have trusted adults, and that's the person that they go to, and they believe the most out of anyone. Study skills are students, are teachers that students go to to help them with their studies. Perhaps maybe they aren't really getting it from the teacher who's teaching the course, and they know that they have someone else that they can go to. Sometimes trusted adults and study skills adults are the same person, and sometimes they aren't. Next, you'll see the subject interest, and then the teacher recommendations. The students took a survey, and so did the faculty and the staff. And the teachers were allowed the opportunity to recommend students that they thought would do well in an AP course. So, this particular young lady has two apples. That means there are two different teachers who thought that she would do well. She has a three-point or grade point average, and then it looks at her reported barriers. She doesn't know much about AP. No one's ever encouraged her, and she's concerned about feeling welcome and feeling that she will belong in an AP course. And then she's not sure that she belongs in college as well. So, those are the barriers that she has to take in an AP course, along with being concerned about how it might hurt her GPA, not thinking that she'll do well in an AP course and it 'll, you know, help her GPA. And she doesn't think that she can be successful and get a good grade, and in reality, she probably can, and she probably will. And then, as with the other young people that I shared with you earlier, here are her comments about what she would like her school to know about her. "When I'm faced with a challenge, I try my best to get through it. I enjoy math. It's easier for me making, making me like it and excel in that class. High school is a struggle, but I do my best. At times, I do struggle, but I don't see my grades changing who I am as a person." So, the comments piece is always very interesting because some students only write a sentence. Other students don't answer the question at all. Some students write so much that the system defaults, it won't go to the other side of the page, it'll just cut them off at a certain amount of character, but they really want their schools to know this information about them. We've seen students who've written it in their native language, and we've had to have them translate it, because it's important for them, as they provide us with this information, to let us know how they feel. So, you take an insight card, and you talk to a student, it's a process, but you take an insight card, and you talk to a student, and you look and say, "We really believe in you. We believe you can do this. Look at your insight card. Look at what you've already accomplished, and we know that you can accomplish more." So, that's the short version of what we do. So, this just tells you the key roles and leadership expectations. We've already created and articulated a shared vision. We're modeling the way with a visible commitment. We want to challenge the status quo, most definitely. Empowering staff and students and parents to contribute, parents are a very big piece of this as well. When you say to a parent, "We want your student to take an, your child to take an AP course, and we need you to support them at home because we're supporting them at school." And really sharing with parents that, while maybe you've not taken an AP course, or you're not exactly sure what it means, you've just has to be, you just have to be a cheerleader at home. "I know that you can do this. You're bright, you're great. The school believes in you. We believe in you here at home. You can do this." Is the support that we want from parents at minimum, and then whatever else they can contribute will only just be the icing on the cake. And then we've already set short and long-term goals for the work that we're gonna do together this year. So, finally, what's your commitment? Normally, when I do this particular piece, I have a little card that says, "I commit to," and I ask everyone to turn it on the other side and write down what their commitment is to the work we're gonna do this year. So, what's your commitment is the question. Do you believe in this work? Do you believe in what we want to do? You definitely believe in the young people that are in your school. As I shared earlier, students have a right to take an AP course, all students, but students of color, and particularly African-American students specifically, and low-income students who don't even know what they have in them. We've got to find those students and give them the opportunity to get a taste of what college is like, so that not only will they apply and go, they will also graduate, so that those statistics that I showed you earlier will be different someday. We're fighting institution, we're fighting a long, institutionally, there have been so many things about education, but this we can affect for the young people in this particular district. So, again, I ask you, what is your commitment? And how will you help us to get these young people to where they should deserve and want to be? Again, equal opportunity, on behalf of the CEO of Equal Opportunity Schools and my boss, thank you so much for having me this evening, and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Dr. Hanlon. Really appreciate you being with us, and I failed to mention Dr. Judy Lynn Mitchell, who's the supervisor of Educational Equity, who's also working on the program. So, thank you, Dr. Mitchell, for being with us. This is a program that is... This is a program that is, um, highly supported by the Maryland State Department of Education. There are a number of systems across the state who've been using, um, have been working with equal opportunity schools for a few years now. And as I sit and listen to superintendents talk about the success of the program, that's part of why I suggested and Dr. Briggs and I worked together to, to make sure that we took advantage of this opportunity as well. Because not only are they seeing increased numbers in advanced placement coursework, but also the scores from AP tests are going up as well. So that's the important part. Thank you so much.
Thank you for being here.
One thing I didn't hear addressed was the encouragement of the students to take the, uh, AP exam. And I understand the fee for the AP exam can be expensive. And for these low income people, how is that fee going to be covered?
Well, I'm not sure that that has anything to do with equal opportunity schools. That's something that we deal with internally.
But I mean, if the children are going to be taking, taking the AP, then they're going to have to pay for the exam.
It would be on us to figure that out.
We would take care of that.
Right.
Take the test and pay for the exam.
Right. We would take care of that.
We would have to figure that out. Yep.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hanlon. Appreciate you being with us and working with us in our schools.
Thank you, Mr. Brady.
So the next item that I have is also brings me great pleasure, um, this evening as I've done over the course of the time that I've been with us, I've had the opportunity to, um, present some golden, uh, golden apple awards to some, uh, very deserving staff members in our schools. So I'd like to do that tonight. I think that everyone knows that the people who work in our schools are very fortunate to have the opportunity to change students' lives every day. But on rare occasions, they even have the chance to save lives. And tonight I'm honored to present golden apple pins to staff members from two schools from our district for their extraordinary life-saving team effort on behalf of a student in distress. So I'd like to ask that Sydney Gold, Carrie Shockley, and Devron Smith of Beaver Run come down. And Kelly Bennett, and I believe Bobby Sue Smith-Hassan was unable to be with us this evening. Oh, she is? Oh, great. I apologize. I thought, it's Kelly who's not here with us. Okay, I apologize. So if you will come down, pardon me. So find a, either microphone so I can tell you all a little bit more about this. So we'll start with Beaver Run. At Beaver Run several weeks ago, it was an ordinary day on the playground. Oh, what she's supposed to come down to. She's being shy. Doesn't want the attention.
Mr. Twilly took care of that for us.
So it was an ordinary day on the playground when teacher Sydney Gold noticed a student having difficulty breathing. This first-year teacher immediately scooped him up and ran with him to the nurse's office. And Nurse Carrie Shockley and CNA, Devron Cook, assessed the student and immediately called nine-one-one. Ms. Gold rode with the student to the hospital and waited until the family arrived. Their quick thinking helped save the life of our young student who was back in school and doing well the following week. Thank you so much for your extraordinary efforts. Salisbury Middle School. There is no greater challenge than keeping a level head to react quickly and appropriately to a student who is unresponsive. And that is what Nurse Kelly Bennett came upon when responding to a student needing medical attention at Salisbury Middle School last month. She immediately called nine-one-one and summoned additional assistance from the school. Special education teacher Bobby Smooth, Bobby Sue Smith-Hassan, sorry, that's a mouthful, uh, came to assist and together they provided life-saving medical care while awaiting the ambulance. The student was flown by helicopter to Baltimore for further medical attention. And this story also has a happy ending. The student was back in school the very next day, thanks in part to the immediate emergency care he received from Kelly Bennett and Bobby Sue Smith-Hassan. So because of your heroic actions, I'm proud to present all of you from Beaver Run and Salisbury Middle School with the superintendent's golden apple award or pins for your life-saving difference that you made in the lives of our students. Can I get you ahold of that? Can you all talk to us?
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Malone, I should have had you come up here when I first got started.
Yes, so we're going to take separate pictures here, one with Beaver Run staff and one with Salisbury Middle School staff.
So let's have all of you all slide down this way, in the middle, towards the middle. Slide this way, Dr. Hanlon. Slide down this way.
Slide down.
We know the slide.
Your slide.
Everybody look this way. Looks like a couple of them. All right, thank you very much.
Dr. Briggs, I'm going to pivot to you for the grants report.
Sure. Uh, for the grants report for the month of October, it'll be pretty quick. We received three grants totaling over thirty-two thousand dollars. Most of the funding was from the Maryland Higher Education Commission for our Gear Up Mentoring Program. And we're also thankful for two smaller grants from the Maryland State Arts Council and the National FFA organization that will be used to support our students. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then, once again, Mr. Button.
Time for the extra mile.
Extra mile awards.
All right.
Okay.
Okay, so I know one of our extra mile award winners was unable to make it tonight, but I'm still going to talk about what he did and he was nominated. That is, uh, Daniel Seaman. He's a computer drafting teacher at Parkside High School. He was unable to make it because he's taking a master's class and he couldn't, said he couldn't afford to miss the class, but he does send his apologies. Uh, in addition to being an outstanding teacher in computer drafting and design in the CTE program at Parkside, Mr. Seaman has been instrumental in bringing the Parkside High School TV studio online and into the twenty-first century for the students. He has done this all in his own time. And although we know that he's enjoying being a part of WRAM News, we also realize that the gift of his time and expertise is invaluable. He was nominated by Sherri Harkins and also Principal Kim Penny. So even though he's not here, let's give Daniel Seaman a round of applause. Our next one is Don Kuzensky. He's a technology specialist at Delmar Elementary. Is Don here? Come on down, Don. Uh, Don is the technology specialist at Delmar. It goes above and beyond every day. The IT office is in the library at Delmar. And during the book fair, in between his jobs, Don really helped them out. He rang up sales, checked library books in and out, helped students find, uh, book fair books. He even moved the book fair cases from the cafeteria when they set it up and also took it down. The book fair is a stressful time for the librarians every year, especially in a school as large as Delmar Elementary. Mostly because of his help, this year's fair, I understand, ran very smoothly. As if helping us wasn't enough, one afternoon of the book fair, Don helped push a parent's disabled van out of the bus ramp so the buses could leave. You're doing everything, huh? So there seems to be nothing Don wouldn't do to pitch in, in wherever it is needed. He was nominated by Terry Johnson and also Susan Richardson. And, uh, we want to congratulate Don and also bring down Bob Langen and take a picture with him, uh, as part of our technology, yeah, I ain't come, oh, I didn't even see you. There, there we go. We got Michelle here as well. So if you guys will be here, let me grab his awards.
Can I give a brief shout out to my teacher of the year?
I'd be derelict in my duties if I did not give a shout out to my mentor, Shane Morton.
He stole my thunder. I was, I saw her sitting over there, I said, I was going to say something witty like, "Teacher of the Year is in the house." So thank you for being here and thank you for representing us well. So four point one, uh, approval of open session minutes. Board members had time to read those in advance, I trust. Entertain a motion to approve them.
Second?
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Five point one through five point eight are our consent items. Um, some of these we've been through before. Hopefully everyone's had time to read them. If there's, if there's any questions, we could entertain them. If not, we could entertain a motion to approve them.
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor approving the consent items signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Perfect. Okay, six point one. Upon the Wycomico County Board of Education Audit Committee recommendation, is there a motion that the board continue to utilize TGM Group LLC for the fiscal year 2020 auditing services in the best interest of the board? Uh, is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? We have people in here who can address that. If you have questions, we have the experts here. Jesse's hiding in the back. But Mark's here.
Yeah, I was sent on as the representative.
Okay. You were pushed up here, okay.
Rock, paper, scissors, I won.
My board member colleagues have any questions or want to discuss this in any way? Okay, I assume you're ready to vote on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well done, Mark.
Yeah. We made it easy. Six point two. Three Wycomico County High School marching bands, James and Bennett, Parkside and Wycomico, recently qualified and competed at the Atlantic Coast Championship for the Tournament of Bands in Hershey, Pennsylvania. Each band has requested monetary support to assist with expenses incurred. Is there a motion to approve a donation of two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, which equates to seven fifty per band, to assist with the travel expenses?
Second.
Anyone have any questions? I see Dr. Bear here, right? Any questions? This is a happy motion. Fair, that's, that's congratulations for, all three of them are there, so that's wonderful. I assume we're ready to vote on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Perfect. Thank you. Six point three. Curriculum Council reviewed a proposal and request to include the text listed in Appendix B of Common Core on our approved reading list. These are traditional literary selections and a brief excerpt is included for each title. This aligns with our goal of providing a wide variety of literary selections to our students and will complement our efforts to also provide diverse and more current texts as well. The council unanimously recommended that move forward to the Board of Education for consideration. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, is there a motion for the adoption for first reading of the titles included in Appendix B of Common Core as part of the approved reading list?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mrs. Malone?
Good evening, Vice Chair Malone, Dr. Hanlon, board members. It's my pleasure to present this this evening. This is a, a good way for us to get a number of literary texts, informational texts, and a wide variety of texts in the hands of our students. One of the other things within this particular appendix is it not only includes an excerpt, but it gives an explanation of what particular area, what particular standard, or how a teacher might use this particular selection to reach the standards and assess whether students are indeed mastering the particular concept. Uh, they include things like the preamble. Uh, they include Nikolai Gogol's The Nose, a Russian short story. It includes, uh, Walt Whitman. It includes, uh, very famous picture books in kindergarten. This list goes kindergarten through grade twelve. And we think it will be a nice addition to approved reading lists so that, um, if a teacher wants to expand on the excerpt, they certainly can. There's nothing controversial in these, but certainly that anyone in the public that wanted to view this particular appendix or view the titles is certainly welcome to do so at our North Gate office.
Any questions?
I thought it was a good list.
The poetry section, the poetry section for grades six through eight is wonderful.
It is. The poetry section is particularly rich all the way through.
Okay, I assume you're ready to vote on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. One opposed?
One opposed.
Did you take down? Okay. Thank you. Motion carries, but we have one opposed. Six point four. During the October meeting of the Curriculum Council, we were informed of the proposed addition of a CTE program of study and apprenticeship. This program would provide students with the opportunity to gain real-world experience and skills in an industry with high employment demands in our area. The curriculum itself would be highly specialized for the individual interests of the student and the demands of the particular industry. It would follow the core sequence of other CTE programs and would qualify as a CTE completer program for graduation. It is planned to offer this option for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year.
This is just to let the public know, let the board know, that we are planning on expanding our CTE programs to include this particular program of study. It would allow, uh, students who have a very particular interest in a high employment, um, career path that would lead to employment in our particular region to get specific training. And we are very excited to add this to our CTE, um, offerings and are planning to start this next year.
Okay. Any questions about that?
I understand that this, uh, is going to be funded through the Perkins money.
It will be, yes.
Good. Thank you, Mrs. Malone.
And that's for information only. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Six point five, personnel matters is a matter of information. So we go to board members report, seven point one. We'll start to my right, if that's okay, with Mr. Palmer. We'll start to my right, if that's okay, with Mr. Palmer.
Thank you, Mr. Malone. I went to the opening demonstration of the planetarium a couple of weeks ago. For those of you who haven't been over there, it's been renovated, and it's simply a beautiful, a beautiful spot for students to learn, especially good for STEM students. Anytime you want to go over there, I advise you to get your classes together and take them over there. It's really a great experience. I was also at the program for the faith-based churches last week. What church was that at?
Emmanuel West.
Emmanuel West.
Emmanuel West. Yeah, that's the first time I've been to that dinner, and it was fantastic. We had like 27 different faith-based groups that worked with the schools and the system, and they just do a tremendous job. And I just want to thank them and all the people they have working with them for their participation in that program. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Mr. Murray?
Okay. I also attended that dinner with Mr. Palmer, and I want to extend this thank you to all the churches that are supporters of our schools. I appreciate everything that they do and help. Also, I wanted to mention that I was one of the other board members that were on tours of some of our schools recently. Saw some fantastic things going on in the classrooms, excellent. And I personally saw real good behavior going on in the schools that we were and things. I wanted the public to know that. I attended the CTE fall program, which is wonderful. Again, thanks to our community and our businesses supporting our CTE students through these programs. I also happened to be in the area on October 27th when it was the 47th Atlantic Coast Championship Band Competition up at Hershey. And it was a pleasure to actually be there. I deliberately set the alarm early to get up. And I have to tell you, Y High was first, and it was pouring rain, and I felt very sorry for them out there, but they did an excellent job. And out of that rain, I sat in my car with the window cracked a little bit so I could hear. But it just gave you a special feeling of our schools, our community, competing with all these other schools up there. And Bennett and Parkside did an outstanding job too, but they didn't have as much rain as Y High. Also, I just, I wanted to, the comments from our high schools and things going on, I really zero in on and thank a lot. Being a graduate of Y High myself, I heard tonight it was mentioned about their participation with their student government with Holly Center. And I know that when I graduated Y High, that's when Holly Center was being built, and we did those dances and volunteer things there too. It's kind of great to see that tradition extending.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Ms. Sifowski?
I attended many of the same events as some of my colleagues here, but I also attended some events that were family-oriented. And I would like to give special comment to the Reading and Math Title I program that Pinehurst School did at the Salisbury Zoo. I went to the Mardella Homecoming, the trunk or treat at Glen Avenue, the pre-K learning party at Prince Street, and the Fruitland Intermediate Reading Program. And what I saw at these particular programs were families coming together. And this is what it's all about. We've got to reach the families. And the families with the children at these programs made me feel really good to see that we were promoting this. I also went, of course, on the tour of the schools. I went over to Bennett Middle, actually to purchase bookmarks to give as little Christmas favors to my friends. The ladies at the Media Center at Bennett Middle have more going on there than just reading. The students are engaged in art projects. They have a new mosaic started, which they hope to have finished by the next book fair in February. So I want to give a big shout out to the Media Center at Bennett Middle School. I went to the Children's Orchestra Concert at Bennett High School. Mrs. Burton had 35 string players from Bennett High School performing. But what impressed me were the hundreds of elementary school students who attended that concert, and there were three or four others to follow. The students were well behaved, and I want to give another big shout out to the person who did the coordination between the video and the music. It was beautifully done. And I also attended the Student Leadership Luncheon at Y High. And as a Y High graduate, especially was intrigued by talking to the students, not only from Y High, but from the other schools that were there. I've had a busy four or five weeks, and I've enjoyed every bit of it. Mr. Malone?
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Brown?
Okay, first I'd like to commend the Superintendent and her administrative staff for the support that they give the schools when they find themselves in a little bit of a predicament. As you can hear, as you heard earlier when we met with the faculty reps, you could tell that the principals and the staff were really pleased that they can know that the central office supports them whenever they have these kinds of crises in their schools. And I'd like to say that we're not going to have them again, but I'm sure we will, and I would like to encourage you to continue to support schools and principals as they adventure into those situations. Unfortunately, because of our society, sooner or later, the ills that plague it find their way into the school system, and we have to deal with those kinds of things. The second thing is that I also was able to attend the Prom Promise as well as the CTE annual dinner. And it's good to see that we have a number of organizations or agencies that support the schools. I think every school and some of them have two faith-based organizations that support them, which is really fantastic. And with the CTE program, I think there were 23 businesses there, and they were celebrating what they do with the CTE program, so that's really good. Another thing that is really grateful, Wycomico County, we're the only school system on the Lower Shore that has a planetarium. And it's really a gem that we have, and I'm glad to hear when this morning, this evening, when Tony Goodyear was talking about his plans for using that so that not only the kids at Parkside High School can take advantage of it, but also other schools can come in. And he's working on a project now to try to involve the other, the community to come in and see it. It's really fantastic. It's a good experience, and I think that's something that not only the students can enjoy, but also the parents and the community at large.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mrs. Laird Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Malone. So it has absolutely been a very busy few weeks for me. I do want to tell you I put on a different hat this week, or last week, excuse me, and played mommy for the entire week. I was involved with the PBIS field trip to the Eastern Shore lanes. We went down to Polkamook and enjoyed that incentive. Also, I was able to attend multiple cross-country meets for elementary school students as my daughter Claire participates in that. Along with that, I was at Glen Avenue, and thank you to Mr. Souza for taking care of that quick repair that was mentioned last week. Good report on that. And for Dr. Vale being out and about, going around, rooting on the students as they were completing their four laps while I just stood and cheered them on. I also attended the orchestra production with my daughter Claire, who is in fourth grade. She plays strings for Ms. Palmer. That was a wonderful presentation. The renovations at the school are phenomenal. The students were wonderful. They knew how to come in and out of the building very orderly. The teachers were very responsive to them if they, if they needed something. I did something a little bit different last week. I was, as a community member, was confronted that there was a shortage somewhere in our community. So I put out on social media that I needed some non-perishable food items donated. And just a thank you to Jay Brittingham, who is a construction, he has a construction company in this area. He donated some non-perishable food items. And Molly and Vanessa Fons, they own the Iron Horse, which is another local cafe, and they donated paper products. And a shout out to Betty Richardson for reaching out to local business communities wanting to help out her school. I again attended many other events. We did the CTE Fall Dinner and Banquet. I also did the school's tours. I was absolutely excited to see the morale was up in our schools after a few altercations. We, the board, the superintendents, assistant superintendents, directors, and supervisors all worked together to turn that situation from a negative to a positive in a very short amount of time to make the students feel comfortable and safe. And a huge thank you for all that were involved in that. The responses from the parent advisory committees last week and the faculty advisory committee that we had today, I just want to thank the parents and the staff members for their boldness to be able to feel comfortable enough to bring positive and negative issues and concerns and comments to us. And I am assured that we're going to do the best that we can to help address those issues as quickly as possible. And again, cannot stress enough for parents and community to be involved. A huge thank you to our religious and spiritual individuals that we have that are supporting our schools and as well as the mentors. Let's make sure that we are working with a purpose, that we are supporting our students, and that if there is an issue or a concern that parents have, that we are readily available to assist them.
Thank you. So, very busy month for all the board members. Highlighted a couple of events. Went to the Kerwin Presentation at Warwick and heard from the mouth of the writer, the chairman, Dr. Brick Kerwin. October 25th, Dr. Hanlon and I went to the Teacher of the Year Banquet or Gala in Baltimore, my first time attending that. What a great event. Well represented by our Teacher of the Year, pre-K teacher Delmar, who was here tonight, Shane Morton. Did not win Teacher of the Year, even though we thought she should have. She represented this very well. It was a great evening, and it's wonderful the way the state recognizes all the Teachers of the Year. Dr. Hanlon and I both attended the 100th Year Celebration of Junior Achievement, which you dressed in 1920s, so that was a very interesting event. Everyone dressed up like the 1920s, including myself and Dr. Hanlon. There are pictures that we can show you, not of me, but we can show you of Dr. Hanlon. Yeah, I just wore my normal clothes, right, for 1920? I was waiting for that. So, the next day I attended the Village of Hope Event, which is another great organization, and attended the JA event at Pinehurst with Comptroller Peter Francho. That was a great, great day too. But knowing we were going to hear from the faculty reps tonight and knowing we were probably going to be talking about behavior in schools, I like quotes. I searched for one. I'm sure many of the educators have heard this one, but "At the end of the day, the most overwhelming key to a child's success is the positive involvement of parents." So for like 30 seconds, I want to speak to the parents who are watching. We do our very best in the public schools to educate your children, to teach them how to behave, teach them some manners along the way, but we need your positive involvement to do the same. Reinforce what their teachers and the administrators teach them every day. Reinforce them how to behave, because we want them to learn, graduate, be successful, and go on and do great things in the world. But it's going to be hard to do that if we are always dealing with behavior issues. So it's, we have them all day long, but you guys have them on the weekends and at nights, and as parents, you've got to step up. I raised three boys. It was not easy, but you have to step up, and you just have to do the right things and teach them the right things and reinforce what they're learning in the school system. We will get them educated, and we will graduate these young people, and they will do great things. But please help us by being involved in a very positive way. We thank the teachers and the administrators and the teams here for all you've done over the last month with those issues. As Mr. Brown said, it probably will happen again. We hope not, but we'll be ready to deal with it, and parents, help us for it not to happen again. So with that, we're adjourned. Thank you.